All right, I'll start the meeting with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, yes.
I have two questions that I think they might be on the agenda, but I'm not sure. My first question is in regards to negotiations and kind of where we go from here. I think that the public is kind of, and the community wants to understand, you know, where we're at, what next steps are, and, you know, school's going to be starting in 29 days. So it's kind of just a general question about what happens and where we are, what's the process. My second question is in regards to enrollment and if that's going to be looked at at all. And, you know, some class sizes are quite large at some of the schools, particularly in the elementary level, and I just wonder if that's going to be addressed.
I know we have an agenda item on negotiations that is coming up, so I think we'll hold comments for that, and then do we have anything on?
You have in your packet, little enrollment.
The superintendent's update.
Under the superintendent's.
Is there any way the negotiations discussion could be moved up from 9:20 at night?
I'm sorry?
Is there any way the negotiations discussion could be moved up from 9:20 at night?
Well, let's see, that does seem long. Do you want to amend the agenda to move that up? Yeah, we just, we have to remember that we warn these meetings so other people might come for specific items, so.
Absolutely. Even eight would be great.
Well, truth be told, the board always would like to think that we might not be there to the very end date, but sometimes we make it, sometimes not.
So, shall we move that?
Can do it up within, during the enrollment piece if you want.
How about if we move it right after Agenda Item 8, before we get into policy review? Is everybody okay with that? And if we do have people come in, if somebody could remind me, I'll at least solicit if they're here for that agenda item, we might have to cover it again.
Thanks so much.
No problem. All right, any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to number four, amendments to the agenda. We already had one.
You've done that one, and you've got to add an executive session for the purposes of the real estate. Item B, we didn't get to B, so we're going to go back in to do that one.
Great, so we'll add an executive session at the end of the meeting for a...
Yeah, for what is identified as B because we didn't get to B.
All right, any other amendments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6. We're ahead of schedule already, city-school collaboration.
We skipped over announcements, I don't have any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have any formal announcements, other than there's a lot going on. Those of you coming into the school, you smell wax, you know, you hear the fans blowing, you see windows that have been replaced at the high school. Things are coming together, we're still, handicap bathrooms at the high school are in the final push. Again, we've got new carpet over at Rick Marcot and the library, yay, you know, it's about time. Although you look at carpet like this, we know there's others on the horizon. So, we're well positioned moving forward well, so.
Cafeteria flow looks like you eat off.
Right, right, right. So, again, that's just a quick, a few announcements, there's other great things going on with students too, a variety of things, our Schools Out program is full up, we're doing all kinds of great activities with the kids. Recreation folks are also doing some nice things on day camp options too, so. We are seeing a lot of students in the buildings, around the building, different places, so.
Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to city and school collaboration.
So, I think, I'll kick it off if you want, Elizabeth, for the board. I think the Burlington International Airport, and we did receive information from the City Council, specific also Tom Chittinen, who's with us, about the school board taking up consideration about the resolution that was, is being proposed before the City Council. I know the City Council has spoken about this particular item, but again, I think it's, it was warned for action, although from what I understand, and Tom can correct us, that I know they are not, have not yet taken action. They plan to do so perhaps on the 7th of August, so my suggestion, I think, would be that you can listen, digest, and not need necessarily to take an action unless you, the board, so chooses, but that would be a little clarification to the governance. And essentially, the governance is looking at regionalizing the governance beyond just that of Burlington and bringing in others municipalities from the surrounding areas of the airport to have a governance structure. So, with that said, I don't know, Tom can...
So why don't we invite Tom Chittinen up? I think we have him, is this...
We have a spot, then, actually, that, we're going to, if people can't hear well, we would maybe ask you to just move forward, yeah, right up at the table there, Tom, be great. But if you want to move forward, I didn't, I didn't bring the amplification speaker in, so if you're having a hard time, please feel free to move forward.
So, Tom, I think, is the author of the resolution and also provided the board with a little bit of background information prior to the meeting tonight, but we wanted to have the opportunity for the benefit of sort of all the time you've spent in putting into this resolution and really have an opportunity for the board to ask clarifying questions and really consider this for future action.
Thank you for that setup, and also for clarifying that the City Council has not yet taken action. I'm under the impression we have it on the agenda for this coming Monday night, and I'm optimistic for us to move this notion forward. This notion has been around for a long, long time. I've talked with anybody that will sit down with me about this topic and picked their brains on the history of this. Going back to the 90s, Jim Condos had discussed this as Chair of the Council. Just as recently as 2013, a consulting agency was hired by the City of Burlington to study this very issue, and this is a presentation that they came up with. That was to a body of 14 individual community leaders, including Ernie Palmerlow, Karen Paul, Pam McKenzie, and many others, who recommended a regional authority. And here we are four years later and just, nothing has happened with it, and so we're restarting this conversation because I think it would address a lot of our concerns as a community, which I think fall into the domain of this school board being the host community. I've heard different directors talk about the importance and need for sound monitoring. I'm a strong proponent for that. You can't improve what you don't measure, and I definitely want to have sound readings of what the noise levels are, both now and in the future. I recently met with John Dinklage, and he's actually why I sent an email to all of you here. I take counsel from John Dinklage, and he strongly encouraged me to reach out to the school board because you have a pressing interest on Chamberlain School and all of our kids that go there. I want sound monitoring, and John Dinklage suggested if the airport's not going to do it, why don't we just put it on the school property? I'm not opposed to such an action, but I believe that the airport is, should be responsible for any financial costs associated to that, plus it would be much more complete if it was done in entirety around the entire property of the airport that generates the noise. The current governance structure, which is very abnormal, where a municipality owns the airport located in another municipality, doesn't occur. I have not found another instance where that's the case. Many municipalities own airports, but not necessarily commonly in another municipality. A much more common governance structure, which other municipalities have gone through, Syracuse, Charlotte, I understand Portland has done something similar as well. They did so for many of the same reasons, they need all the stakeholders at the table, and I believe the school board is a stakeholder with your current property located in close proximity to the airport. I sent a bunch of remarks in advance because I know how long these meetings can go, and I want to be brief, so I'm going to stop talking now and just ask if you have any questions or thoughts on this notion.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I mean, I think we definitely have an interest in this, and it does seem odd that a different community has the ability to control what does have impacts on our school. So, I mean, my general feeling, you know, there are parts of the joint resolution that I didn't think were necessary one way or another, but that's not, I think that's beside the point. So, I'm in favor of what you're trying to do. I'm not sure what you're asking from us as far as, you know, I don't know if, you know, we're not going to adopt, I don't think this resolution, I wouldn't think, but, but as far as, at least I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I think this is the right direction to be going in, so.
And maybe, Tom, the question is, my understanding based on some of the communities that you've identified in the resolution, that depending on what the council decides Monday, there may be some interest in taking this to other communities, or is that?
Correct.
That's a really question, actually.
The City of Winuski passed this resolution unanimously that night, and I understand we are currently, or we, as in Kevin Dorn and possibly the mayor of Winuski, and I've been invited to join, but anybody's welcome to go, are going to present before Colchester and I believe Williston later this month, and we're optimistic that we can get more support for this. This is really a reasonable notion that I think would just align the decision-making for the interests of all that really own the airspace of the Champlain Valley.
Stephen?
Well, were you looking for us to adopt the resolution?
So, honestly, I sent the email because I just wanted the school board elected leaders who are familiar with the ins and outs and interactions with the airport, which I know the school board has had over the years, to be aware of it, and also personally, if you had questions, I would, I would welcome adoption, endorsements, even just statements in favor, especially from one of our four state representatives. I've spoken to the other three, so that's meaningful. I'm really not trying to get out ahead of this, I'm just trying to find out where the flaws in this reasoning and logic are and run this notion down, because nothing has happened with it for four years, and I think that's partly because it rests with Burlington, which has some entrenched interests in the current configuration, which aren't necessarily serving the interests of the entire community, and that's why I think we need to stand up and stand together, just to have the conversation.
Yeah, and I think for purposes of the meeting tonight, we warned it for action, not wanting to hold things up if the board was ready to do that. I don't think we need to take action tonight, particularly based on the fact that the council hasn't, and it's really coming from the council, but it's the opportunity to kind of ruminate on what's being proposed. I do get the sense that if the board chose to take action, it would be yet another municipal body that is affected by this regional proposal that is kind of weighing in and believing there's some advantage to that kind of governance structure. Is that fair?
Fair. And thank you for the setup, I definitely am not here representing the council, this is just a notion I'm looking to get more perspective on.
And Tom also did a nice job kind of summarizing what some of the opposing points might be and what your response is. So, I mean, there's quite a bit of documentation to read, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to go through it all, but that should frame the support or non-support at the board level of the motion. I think the couple of things I would just add, which I don't believe anything contradicts in the resolution as proposed, Tom, is that there's, there's an interest, and David's been very diligent about pursuing appropriate authorities, both in Burlington as well as at the airport, around both the noise envelope as it affects Chamberlain School right now, but really with the notion of prospective noise studies. And there is, I think it's fair to say, there's been less of an interest in noise mitigation exclusively if in fact the noise envelope with these prospective noise studies actually even shows incidence of really high noise exposure for kids, because the ability to sort of, even with the best of mitigation, to try to keep our students at Chamberlain within the walls of the building, we don't want to have to do that and risk any health impact. So, the prospective noise studies and then mitigation, yes, but also the, for purposes of planning, from a facility standpoint, the, the issue of the home buyouts. Really, one of the things that we would be helpful to our planning process is not taking a position on the home buyouts, but basically saying, we need to know what the, you know, what the number is, and if it would continue, and is it definitive, and things like that. So, that also is not entirely clear to the school board and to the superintendent as he's looking at making decisions that impact the school and the neighborhood.
I think what I just heard you say is that as much as the noise envelopes are important for many decision-making, for many decisions, you want actual raw data about the noise that we are hearing on the Chamberlain School property, because that factors into a lot of the decisions that we...
That's, that's a baseline, and then obviously prospective noise studies relative to the F-35s, and then the, the home buyout. I think those are the primary issues that impact planning for school purposes. Fair?
Those are things that I, we have advocated as a community for 10-plus years, yet have not made progress on, and that's why I also think a governance model might adjust that, but I've already used up a lot of your time and you have a full agenda, so. Thank you all for listening to this, I would love to hear from you on this topic, via email or formally, otherwise, and...
So we do have a, a meeting on the 16th, so if it's the board's pleasure, we could add this to the agenda item at that point, and then we will know the results of the council decision at that point.
So we would put that on for the 16th, and we would warn it for action?
I think we should, yeah. Keep the option open.
Great.
Good, thank you, Tom, very much. Any comments from the public on the agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, the superintendent's report.
So, under my report, I have the enrollment, I included the update on the current enrollment. When I say current, it was as of 7/25, so, again, it's always a moving target, mostly at the kindergarten level. I did not give you the middle and the high school. I think some of the, the higher visibility ones are certainly at the elementary. Again, remember that we added a teacher at Central School from 19 to 20, and we added a teacher at Orchard, and you see that reflected on the bottom as well. Actually, you don't see it there, but it went from 20 to 21, just because it has projected... What I projected? And then what's currently confirmed, you see the two different columns. Currently, you know, I did meet with the elementary administrators primarily about this, specific to whether or not the contingency teacher was needed, and the decision that I reached and they affirmed was that we would not currently, we are not pushing forward the contingency teacher at this time. A few areas of watch right now, I would say, at Central School, our kindergarten enrollment projected was at 62, and it's at 44, lower than we expected. We do expect that additional students will likely come in between now and the start of the school year. For whatever reason, with all of our notification, et cetera, it hasn't prevailed. That said, I don't know where we'll end up, but right now, we're currently at three teachers, and you can see that average class size somewhere in that 14. That's an area of watch. The other area of watch, certainly at Rick Marcot, is the third grade, you know, it's in that slightly over the desired at 18.7, and so we're going to continue to watch that group as well, but it's certainly within the, within the guidelines. At Chamberlain, we, again, remained firm at 14 teachers. Again, a lower-than-expected kindergarten enrollment at 38. Again, this is still, as I said earlier, kind of our, you know, slightly volatile, although again, we think at this point, we're pretty close, they're at 38. The decision was to move from three teachers in the kindergarten to two and move the other, that teacher then, or a resourced teacher to fifth grade. Actually, the teacher is here, and probably doesn't want me to say that, but Kathy Murphy has been a longtime kindergarten teacher, and she is moving to fifth grade, and you'll see the class sizes there. So, there's, there's a little bit of a watch, you know, on some of those things, but again, all grades currently come in at an appropriate size. We're watching a little bit, that first grade at 42, but again, the average overall is within that range. At Orchard, again, we moved from, we moved up from 20 to 21 teachers. All of them, you know, are definitely orchards in the upper threshold of all of those areas. However, they are still within, within the, within the not to exceed, although close at third grade at 19, and, you know, their upper limit there in fourth at 23, 24 or so is also an area. So, overall district, which is on the bottom, you see where our teachers are deployed by grade, from 10 teachers in first, second, and fifth, nine teachers at K, eight teachers at third and fourth, for a total of 55, and our average K5 is just a tad over 17 there. Again, tough, tough part of balancing, you know, the three schools. Again, we've appropriately resourced the schools, we continue to do that appropriately with literacy, math coaches, et cetera, support services, special education, ELL, et cetera. So, that's where we are, giving you a little bit of a snapshot. I won't be here on the 16th, but I want to give you another one, you'll have something similar to this, it will just be updated more recently, and if there are concerns or things happening, I'll be highlighting them for you as well.
Board questions?
Yeah, I did a couple of questions. But first, as I've understood in the past, because in dealing with this on an annual basis, one can see a cohort that, you know, it could be the same grade, and it could be at a school, at a different school, where there's quite a discrepancy between how many kids are in the particular, each class for a particular cohort. And certainly that is impacted by where we're drawing our students from, and that also points to a possibility of looking into redistricting at some point. But also, it reflects, I mean, different cohorts, from what I understand, could have different levels of need as far as the individuals in the cohort. So, you, there may be a reason why a cohort is, you know, class size in one school is smaller because there may be higher needs students in that particular cohort at that school. And it may be fine to have a larger class at a different school for that same grade, because there's not the same level of needs. This is all lead-up to a question, believe it or not. So, so when I look at the kindergarten though, and, or any of the kindergarten classes, do we have information about the level of needs of those incoming students to understand that two classes of 19 makes sense at Chamberlain? Or, you know, I mean, I don't like the idea of having three classes with 12 and 13, but, I mean, is that weighed or put, is that weighed as part of this as well? Or do we wait and see what happens when we get the students before we make decisions for perhaps a parent educator to help out and such?
So, to the cohort question, and this kind of gets to kindergarten too, we do look at the cohort, and I think one of the things that we've tried to be mindful of is if you're in a group of, a class, and that class size has always been big from first grade, and it keeps, you know, it stays big with high, high numbers in your class for your teacher, we try to be watchful that it, you know, you're not in a class of 23 all the way through your entire experience, one. Because at some point, we may say it's important that the resource get distributed accordingly, so you don't have that, whereas the contrast would be, the grade right before it or right after would be significantly smaller. So, looking at distribution of the resources based on the cohort flow or cycle. The kindergarten is certainly, we do have information that comes from, you know, our preschool partners. We have more preschool partners as a result of Act 166, and we have more governance happening in our pre-K programming, but that said, and I think it's appropriate for me to say, it doesn't tell us everything that we want. If you're a classroom teacher, a kindergarten teacher, you're going to say, well, this is what I heard I was getting, this is kind of the, the background information, and then there's the first day, you know, there's the first day exposure, the intermix of students altogether, that may be a different group in and of itself, so it's different. I would say we've come a long ways from having more delineated information than we have in the past, but we don't have as much on that kindergarten cohort, let's be clear, than we do about all of our other grades.
And if it ends up that a particular kindergarten cohort in one of the schools does have higher needs, I mean, the answer is, what, a parent educator help?
Not always, again, part of that is, you know, you know, I want to, there's a multitude of options, and I've tried to be really clear with the, with the administrators, and we're all on the same page, is that we need to look at, you know, on behalf of the community, we resource our schools pretty well. We have reading, we have coaches, and we have a fair amount of additional resources. It's really back to the administrator to say, with the resources you have, could be parent educator support that you might have here, but based on the cohort, it might be more important here. That's the first question, is with the resources that you have, how can you redeploy them in a way that isn't just me approving an FTE? If the resource distribution can't be done because there's a high need there and we don't have other resources, and that can be, you know, communicated across our district, right, between all three elementary schools, then there may be a place where we say we need some additional resources. Again, we certainly, last year, it was evident that we had some real significant uptick in need because of some escalated behavior that we did not anticipate, and therefore, we did add some staffing to that. And we did it in the same way that I just explained, that we asked about the resources, we didn't have them, and therefore, we added them. So that's kind of the sequencing, you know, that we will go through, or would go through, have gone through, and would continue to do so.
Well, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
Other board questions?
I think this might not be a fair question, because I didn't ask any report to be prepared before this meeting. Do you have a sense of where we are in tuition students, so, that's a middle and high school, just in ballpark terms?
I think we're about where we were last year, Bridget. I think we had a slightly bigger class, we have a slightly bigger class coming in, but we also had a slightly bigger class going out, so I think the net, the net change is about the same. But I can certainly include that in the, in the 16th report.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Questions from the public? All right. Thanks, David. All right, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 8. I'm looking at my scribble notes, the master planning and visioning on committee structure update.
So, we had a, we had one of our first committee meetings, and I think it was overwhelming a little bit, at least, I think Bridget actually was, was right up to speed, actually, did a great job kind of connecting with Steve and asking a lot of great questions and having a conversation. We did provide, I know there's some notes of...
Pass it around, let me just, so, John Stewart is working with us to sort of help us as a committee, and so he took some very detailed notes of sort of the headline action items from the meeting that I'm just now passing around to the board. But really, it was sort of a, this meeting was more of a framework meeting to sort of help get Steve up to speed a little bit on, you know, what's happened in the past with master planning and visioning and the resolutions that we passed in December with regard to sort of the next steps. We talked, just sort of very freely, about what we thought sort of the role of the subcommittee should be, or how we could help David and support him, you know, in the master plan and visioning process. And, and then just some, these notes you have in front of you are sort of some specific action items. We left open, we sort of said we would go away and think about how often we need to meet and sort of the framework for, for the actual work of the subcommittee as opposed to the work that David is doing in between the meetings. So, we have yet to schedule our next meeting, but I think probably relatively soon, once we get through a few other big meetings that the board has, we need to have another one to sort of nail down just the rhythm of the work and how Steve and I can best contribute.
Are these items, Bridget, you would want to go through now, or just share with the board at this point?
My only question, David, is do we want to share them more for the public from a transparency perspective? Because the board can certainly take these away and read them, I mean, I don't think there's, for the board, we don't necessarily need to go through them, but I think this is, the master planning and visioning has been something that's been in the back of people's minds for a very long time. We have deadlines coming up very quickly, and it might make sense to kind of skim through these, these, these notes. The other thing we could do instead is to post them, you know, we could have, you know, master planning and visioning, the tab on the website, we could just post them instead, if you prefer. I don't think there's anything in here that's very, that would, that would be sort of executive session type things, so I don't know, what's your, what's your pleasure?
I think it's, I think it's great, I think part of the, again, the establishment of the committee listening and being able to give the public kind of, you know, an update on where we are, some of the things we're talking about, again, Elizabeth, through Thomas Chittinen alluded to certainly Items 5, you know, on the status of kind of the noise, and also how do we get some traction with the Air Force, et cetera, were two of the things connected to certainly Chamberlain. But I think it would be good to go through this, and I think it, certainly, you know, we have already a master planning and visioning tab, we can certainly be updating as the committee, you know, continues to work, so. I think just going through these and maybe... I think just going through these and maybe soliciting any feedback from the, from the public or questions would be great.
Okay. Steve, do you want to split it up, or do you want me to just go through it? What would you, what would you prefer?
How long have you had to read this?
Two seconds, but that's okay. It's okay. I mean, these are things that we knew from our meeting, but it's nice to see them sort of.
How about you go ahead and I'll do color commentary.
That would be great. Okay. So there are just ten. We won't spend too much more than, you know, a minute on each. The first one is that we are starting to plan for the FY19 budget. I think anybody who followed the budget discussion would recall, there was about seventy-five thousand dollars in for the big broad bucket of master planning and visioning that was cut back to forty thousand dollars. And what was cut when the thirty-five thousand was taken out was really planning for educational program priorities and sort of some necessary changes that would follow from those priorities, or things that we wanted to add to the curriculum, or change about the curriculum. For example, project based learning spaces, those kinds of things. The forty thousand that stayed in was really to do the very basic groundwork. We had some surprises come up last year in doing some big construction projects that caught us all off guard with things that we already knew were on the stewardship plan. And that forty thousand is really to do a good structural analysis of the buildings so that we know what's possible as we sort of enter those discussions to say, what do we really need in terms of additional spaces or changes to spaces to support the curriculum? And so that forty thousand dollars of work is going on this year. The first item that we sort of talked about, we need to do is to start to plan that thirty-five thousand, whether that's the right amount, you know, how that would be deployed, what the work around determining what changes to the curriculum would look like, or changes to the spaces as a result of changes to the curriculum would look like. So that was the first. Do you have anything to add?
I think it's pretty good. We know, we characterize it, there's sort of one A and B, but there's only A on the list, which is the forty thousand mechanical assessment. B was dropped as part of the budget pairing process in eighteen. And the question is, do we want to tack it back on in nineteen?
Yep.
Which would be sort of the phase two of the mechanical assessment.
And then, so the second bullet point is that there were RFPs submitted by architectural firms for identification of upgrades at the high and middle schools. So again, as part of the master planning and visioning process, that's sort of been on the back burner just a little bit in terms of our discussion of it, at least in public. There, when we were looking at the five different options for master planning and visioning last year, several of them came with upgrades to the high school and middle school. And I think we all agreed as part of our resolutions that the high school and middle school upgrades should take precedence over ones at the elementary schools, or at least in terms of timing. And so architectural firms have submitted responses to an RFP to sort of help identify what upgrades are really going to be necessary and help cost those out. And so David has those. He was going to pare that down to the top two and sort of submit them to the subcommittee. But really, he's going to recommend to all of us, you know, which one we should go with. But, but he thought it might help if Steve and I both had a look at those. Not that we would really make a decision, but he would just sort of get, come to the board with the full recommendation about which architect to use for that work.
May I just pause? Think, that's, that's great, Bridget. So we have been reading those. We pared them down. We are going to get them to both Bridget and Steve for, for other review. And you'll see our, kind of our recommendation and rationale. But we need to bring this back so we can just park this for future agenda item conversation. The sixteenth, again, I'm not here and John Obin are not here. We don't think that's really the right time. If there are questions that come up, we probably shouldn't do it there. We are going to have a warned meeting likely, negotiations on the twenty-first, whether we have a brief period for open session or we wait until September. Our worry a little bit is, we kind of want to be able to get going on this, on some of these things. These are, you know, many of them are delayed because of the budget delay. But we can talk about that. I think John and I talked briefly about this. Ideally, it would be great if we could get it in, in the tail end of August, but we could also, also you guys need some time to digest it so we could push it to the first meeting in September for an award or a decision. So we can talk about that when we get to that budget item, or item on the agenda.
So the third item that we really spent some time on was the NIESC assessment. That's kind of ongoing. And NIESC, of course, is our accreditation body. And they are, there have been previous recommendations that are now in the study process for our ongoing NIESC assessment. And so the subcommittee sort of agreed to monitor this process, especially with regard to learning spaces and other changes that NIESC was recommending. And to really start to do some framing of, you know, what do we want to accomplish in the spaces we have, and where were there some deficiencies noted or that might be noted in this NIESC process. So you might be able to give us a bit more color on where the NIESC process is in terms of dates.
Yeah, so we, we've gone through the self-study phase, and we are currently now in the, in the actual visitation. So visitation will happen this year. We'll then get a report back. That report will talk about, you know, kind of the areas that, that are adequate or in need. And I think to your point earlier, Bridget, was that this is a really important part of, number one, in that thirty-five thousand, or whatever that might be, is let's, let's identify. And again, I think Bridget and Steve were, were great at making sure this was at the forefront, is what are the, what's the curriculum call for? What are then the spaces that we need? And does NIESC in fact support that, validate it? And then we're in a much better place to move forward as opposed to, we want to make a space look different, right? And we don't, we want to lead obviously with curriculum. So that's where we are with NIESC.
Yep. Number four, we talked about dates. So our resolutions in December of last year had four different sort of deadlines for different items. I don't have the resolutions in front of me at the moment, but the earliest one was really that by December of this year, we would have a contingency plan in place for Chamberlain. And based on, you know, what we went through with the budget and some other work that's been ongoing, you know, things have slipped a little bit in terms of really, you know, we just had our first subcommittee meeting last week. So we are a little bit behind. And we haven't had the full discussion of what we think are realistic dates. But we probably will be coming back to the full board to ask that, that we adjust those dates, because otherwise we are simply just going to blow through them in some cases.
Was there any discussion, Bridget or Steve, on, you know, one of the, one of the things about the dates, aside from just, you know, work and capacity, was data that I know David's been working hard to acquire through various means. Would it make sense at some point to sort of just say, we need a contingency plan almost regardless of the data?
A contingency plan for the contingency plan.
Well, I don't want to say assume a worst case, but I feel like if we delay waiting for the, for data.
Yes.
We, we, we miss a window in a lot of ways.
Yeah. And I think that number five really speaks to that. So, so number five sort of gets specifically to that with regard to Chamberlain specifically. So to find out what the cost and effort would be to complete the analysis of the four options of Chamberlain would have to be closed due to threats to the health and education outcomes to students caused at that location. So we really did focus a lot on Chamberlain in our meeting and kind of trying to understand what the moving pieces were there and where we really could perhaps get data. And, you know, we did talk a lot about, you know, what are the options if, if regardless of data, we feel like it is time to go ahead and move those students.
Can you remind me what the four options are? Are they the four options from the master planning and visioning process, or is?
Yeah, the four options, I'm slightly confused about David. You might be able to refresh my memory. I don't remember us having all of these numbers in front of us in terms of four different options for Chamberlain that we had.
Well, it was, have we discussed that on a public forum yet? The, you know, specifically if we had to make a decision on Chamberlain in an emergency?
I don't know that we've.
We have not had that discussion.
Okay.
And by the way, I'm not suggesting that, I think you, you know this, but I'm not suggesting that a decision be made. I'm just saying that there'd be a contingency plan, not unlike if there was some major event at any one of our locations.
What would you do with the students? What would you do with education delivery?
Right.
So do the options have to do with real estate? Is that what, I mean, that we?
Well, less so about, you know, selling of real estate and that kind of, you know, that obviously would come into it at some point. It would be more, you know, how much is it going to cost us to have a couple of different potential things that we decide between? So for example, do we put the kids in trailers at Central and Orchard, you know, on those properties? Or is it possible to move fifth graders very quickly to the middle school, those kinds of questions? So a lot of it is back to, you know, a little bit where we were in terms of looking at costs, but looking at some more temporary things that weren't on the big master planning and visioning options. So for example, the trailers. And David started to do some of this work already. We need to dig a little bit more deeply into it and say, what, what contingency plan could be feasible if we really needed to move children very quickly?
I mean, I think the concern maybe is most highly concerning at Chamberlain. But it could exist, I think, as you said, it could exist at any school, you know? And so if, I mean, I don't want to create a panic button, but there should be, what happens if you got major flooding, you know, major water, major, major damage, and it's going to be a month? What are you going to do with the contingency? So it's, it's a little bit of that. But clearly, Chamberlain is, is in that spot where what, what if, you know, homes, what if, you know, the sound, you know? So again, I think you're asking me to come up with a, you know, pretty delineated cost, you know, driven.
Based on the information that we have so far, that this doesn't sort of involve at this stage hiring consultants or spending a lot of outside money. This is more sort of analyzing what we already know. And David already has some numbers in terms of what temporary space might cost and that kind of thing. So this is more of an internal effort as opposed to a big external effort. So number six was to sort of check on how we can accomplish independent noise readings at Chamberlain, both at the F-16s inside and outside of the building, to be used as a baseline to compare when the F-35s arrive. Because we've just been sort of roadblocked every time we ask for actual data. And this is, and when I say actual data, I mean something other than these prospective noise studies. And this is what the sound envelope should be based on the computer model. But can we actually monitor the sound at the school and understand, you know, what the loudest sound on a given day is and what the sound is during the school day? Because a lot of those studies that we've seen so far are based on, you know, DNLs, so day-night noise levels, that sort of average things together and don't really reflect exactly what students and teachers are experiencing during the day, which is when most of the sound is really happening. So we were, we talked a lot about that.
Yeah. I mean, I think it makes sense, you know, just, there is at least one date certain that's in the future, and that's the deployment of the F-35s in fall of 2019. And so, and one of the workflows that David and John and others and Steve Stitzler are working on is trying to get reliable, and I believe it's FAA-generated noise data. Also, we kind of went through about, I don't know, two dozen different metrics of noise and describing, you know, single incidence of a plane going over, the average noise over a 24-hour period. There are lots of technical parameters. But, but right now, there's kind of no certainty as to the FAA-driven data coming to us on any kind of a timeframe. That was the basis for number six, which is, all right, well, maybe it would be a good idea, while we're continuing to work on that, to also develop an independent assessment. Because the premise is, we already have the F-16s operating. And generally speaking, we can still conduct operations at Chamberlain under those conditions. So let's baseline what those conditions are independently. And then, you know, when the F-35s deploy, we'll actually have, in addition to sort of the perception of how it is for the teachers and the students working in that environment, we'll also have hard noise data on a variety of parameters to back any decision, potentially precipitous decision. And that's where these, you know, four options, if we say, okay, it's now too noisy to effectively use the Chamberlain facility, what are some scenarios we can do in the short term while we're bridging to a more permanent solution? So it's contingencies. It's just having contingencies.
And I think Steve kind of segued or covered number seven as well. So Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher are still, you know, working with us to get data and options from the FAA and the Air Force. So he kind of covered that as he spoke about number six.
I think a lot of that too, just to be clear, is looking at, you know, how best we communicate, you know, with, with authorities like the FAA and, and, you know, interpreting their rules is sometimes the legal language that we don't understand. And so it's, that's kind of that deployment of those resources.
So make it clear, Stitzel, Page, and Fletcher are the attorneys for the school.
Right. And, and, yep.
People that understand.
That's right. And we're not, we're, you know, they're, they're a firm that we use.
The number eight was, we talked a little bit about how to communicate the work of the subcommittee with other members of the board and the public. And I think we had kind of settled that we would sort of update everyone as we have meetings, just much like the negotiation subcommittees do, on where we are, any major decisions that might be coming to the board, or, you know, things that we need your, the bigger board's input on. And yes, I was very pleased. Actually, I don't think we actually asked John Stewart to type up these notes, but it was great that he did. Because we'd be winging it a lot more than we are. Yes, no.
He actually had this note that I would write an update, so I kind of took it off my plate.
Took that right off of your plate, yep. And then John Obin had developed, this is number nine, John Obin had developed an analysis tool to start to analyze different master planning and visioning options. And we just need to keep sort of adjusting that and populating it with data as we, we gather data. Do you guys want to say anything else about that?
Yeah. And this was, I think, specifically a refresh, I'm trying to remember the date of the meeting, but it was the one we held at Chamberlain where, and I don't know if you've introduced the model in the past, but it's basically building up that the per pupil costs at Orchard and Central are about thirteen thousand round numbers. And it's Chamberlain at sixteen thousand, just because it's a smaller school, you've got a smaller census of students spread over a lot of similar fixed costs for a facility. So, you know, it's just absent all of the other potential exogenous factors like the deployment of the F-35, the reality is it's more expensive to operate Chamberlain on a per-student basis. Does that inform some of our longer-term decision-making?
The only thing I would add to that was, again, with this analysis tool, as Steve said, on the financing and Bridget around how, how we populate, populate that data. The idea here is to have a tool. And we've, and again, John has done a nice job of kind of pulling that together for us where we would kind of be able to, to highlight whether it's, it maintains in a positive category, or it remains in a neutral category, or it remains in a concerned category. And the ability for the, for you, the board, to be able to kind of go through all of those various categories, but to see where the, where, is there a total sum, you know, that kind of adds to, we need, we need to be sooner rather than later making a decision, or we need to do it now, or whatever the case may be. So that's kind of the tool as we, as we get the data to try to populate it, to say, does this answer that question? And so that's been, that's been helpful.
And then the last major item was, we discussed the enrollment projections. And the demographer has been working on updating those. And so we should have soon sort of a provisional report. Do you remember the, I don't remember the date off the top of my head, David.
Sure. So we have it now, actually, and the board and community can have it because this is the same demographer that we use when we did the master planning. But because, just like we just talked about enrollment, our actual submission of enrollment to AOE doesn't happen until October one.
Right.
That's the census time that they take that. So we will have it, actually, we probably will include it, I think, I'll include it in the sixteenth packet, you know, with some of the update for you. And October first, we'll get, we won't get it on October first. We'll get it somewhere probably in October. We'll get the update based on the census work. We do think it's important. I know that there's questions around the demographic study that was done last, like, oh, it seemed to be off. This is an opportunity for the demographer. They ask, you know, a ton of questions of the city, new, new building lots, you know, all kinds of other information. But we'll be, the ability to make adjustments and see kind of predictability that the, the report has that, you know, we hope will be helpful to us in informing, again, a component of this, this decision-making tool.
David, I'm going to reach back to a prior agenda item that you covered in your report. But, you know, just looking at Central, for example, where, you know, we're projecting three fifty-five, we're coming in at three twenty-nine, it's like twenty-six, you know, it's like seventy-eight percent. And that's just over a period of months. And so I'm wondering, is that, is that very unusual? Just your, your instinct or your, your sense of that? Is that a typical variability that you'd observe at this stage of the process? Or do you think it's unusual?
No, I think the volatility at kindergarten has always been, I mean, in my time in education, has always been kind of this anomaly. On, you know, some moms and dads are, you know, are that group, or they're just diligent about registration and getting them there. And then there's others that will, will see them in the last week, you know, coming in, in droves.
Two-thirds of it is the kindergarten, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's driving that.
It's just that volatility is there. You know, we, we, again, I say we, but the staff work really hard to put out information, to do kindergarten screening, to do all kinds of reach-outs to our partners. But for whatever reason, it, it just remains kind of this anomaly. Now, I could be back to you, you know, late August to see. Now, I could be back to you, you know, late August to say, we picked up, you know, a lot more than we planned, again. That's a little bit of the issue, and I think that's the same issue to the demographer issue, is like, you know, it talks about all the, the students moving in and out, in-migration, out-migration, home values that weigh into, you know, people staying, et cetera. So, there's a whole series of things that probably need to look more at.
Yeah, and that's what I'm hoping, again, in the demographic study, because we've talked a lot about, oh, you know, it was such a miss on the numbers, and I think it was still single-digit percentage points of a miss. Should we then just assume, take the, take the central tendency with a grain of salt, focus more on the dispersion around that central tendency? In other words, it's very imprecise, the general direction ought to be kind of accurate, but there's going to be a range around that, and we actually observed that in our own, just year-over-year numbers, so.
One of the tabs, and I think I might have forwarded it to you, oh, I had a tab of enrollment kind of projections that I use, and so, part of that is in these projected categories, but then I also kind of have a run rate over time, and I did not build, I did not build this sheet, but, you know, I continue to use it, and it kind of shows based on the projected and the incoming, kind of what that percent number is, whether it's way over 100%. And so, it does allow for, what I would say, maybe some cross-checking with the demographer. And, you know, I've had a conversation with him about that, and, again, simplified tool, but it shows historical kind of cohorts migrating through our system, you know, and kind of, why is it always we lose?
That could give us sort of a variance.
That's right.
That's exactly it.
But some, you know, and I'm just picking this, but some, for some reason, there's a fourth-grade cohort that just sees, you know, a drop when they go from fourth to fifth, you know? Why is that, you know, at that one school? So, some of those pieces.
And I will say, last year, I was sitting in your shoes, sort of watching this happen for the first time, and I remember, we were having the same conversation about, wow, everything changed by 20 students this week, like, where did these 20 students come from, or where did they go? And it did seem to bounce around completely until within the first week of school, really, and then it finally kind of settled in, but.
That said, we do go, I don't go with anecdotal, like, hey, we've got five people moving in, and they have a household of, you know, three. We say, mm-hmm, well, we put that in the back of our brain, but we really are, we're looking at here, you know, actual registered, you know, students.
Yeah, so, we just should, these, you know, the yellow column and the white column are completely different things. You know, the white, the white column is the guests, and the yellow is what we have so far.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
So, you know, to say that we're projected to have a lot fewer in kindergarten in any of the grades is not, none, I wouldn't say it's accurate, I, because if you compare the two, you're not comparing equal things.
Well, again, part of my, you know, I would like to be as close to the confirmed as possible, I mean, that's kind of, the goal is to be as close to that as possible, Alex. So, that's, that does show you, you know, what tools are you using, David, when you made, you know, you made projections, you know, for the kindergarten, and it's coming in here?
Yeah.
So, this will add, you know, value from the demographer and other data that I spoke about earlier around how to hopefully close the gap.
Yeah, and the thing I'd be concerned about is the kindergarten at Orchard, because you projected 64, and you already have, what, 68?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you get that, you know, last-minute rush of kids enrolling in mid to late August, you're going to be well over 68.
Again, that's part of, you know, we do have a contingent teacher out there, again, as I outlined all of the steps earlier, you know, there's, it's not all about it.
Steps along the way.
That's right, yeah, and we'll deploy that.
So, anything else, Bridget or Steve, on the subcommittee work?
I don't think so, unless anyone has questions.
That's a great summary. Any other board questions? Questions from the public? Yes.
I commend and appreciate the work on considering the health and safety of the students of Chamberlain. My question is, I understand that it is your purview to only be thinking about the framework of the school day, but, you know, if the data comes in that there are serious health concerns that require you to take action, these children still live in that neighborhood. So, is there any kind of thought or plan that, to make a connection with the city council or with some other body that would then be considering the fact that even when they're not in the school, if there are health and safety issues, that they are still vulnerable to them because, by virtue of the fact that that is where they live?
I mean, I think it's safe to say that part of the board's work and executive session is in part paying attention to some of the things that we know we need to be doing to ensure the safety of, you know, of some of the things you outlined, I think. We're certainly aware, and again, the board knows that, you know, just sound mitigating the school doesn't take away the sound when they're out at recess or when they're at home. So, there's a component of this that needs to be completely understood, whether it's understanding, as Bridget outlined, that kind of the noise contour, the DNL, day-night noise, average over 24 hours, or are there other complexities that we need to consider? Because we do want kids to go outside, we do want them to, you know, be in homes that, you know, are appropriate for them to grow up in.
So, I mean, just, I'd also comment that, I mean, I think that the sound after school in that neighborhood is really not in our purview, I mean, maybe we would be more concerned if I didn't have confidence that the city council has been looking at this very carefully, which is clearly, you know, clearly in their purview as far as, you know, dealing with all those houses, whether they're kids or elderly or whatnot, and so, I'm confident that that's being covered, you know, that component of it, but our focus really has to be within, well, not just within the walls, but within the confines of the school, including recess, yeah.
Right, it just seems as though you're planning to accumulate a lot of data that, you know, could be very valuable to others who are considering, you know, the health and safety of these kids when they're not in school. So, I would hope that, you know, somewhere, you know, there might be some overlap between what, what all of you, you know, the work that you do gathering that information and how it's shared.
Yeah, I think any major findings would be shared, I mean, Elizabeth and David meet on a regular basis with, you know, with the city, and there is a good, you know, sort of collaboration, and they do share data with us as they have it, and I don't think that we would keep anything from them, obviously, but, but as Martin said, I think our focus really has to be what's happening during the day, mostly. Some of that may end up being that we're monitoring sound 24 hours, and that could be good information for the city to have.
Yeah, and Kathy, honestly, at this point, I'd like to say we're planning to collect a lot of data, we don't really know what is going to be possible at this point.
I just, you know, I would just hope it would be something that might be on your radar screen.
Good. Any other questions from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item, now we've moved 11 up, update on negotiations. I'll give a quick update and then ask Martin and Bridget on, to add if you would like to. The Fact Finders report with, has been published on the district website, that was issued. And then, we do have a working session scheduled with the SBA tomorrow evening, and are hopeful that we might be able to get to a settlement at that time. All parties have agreed to be available, if there are some items that need to be, continue to be discussed, all parties have agreed to be available with a mediated session on August 21st, and with the intent that we would try to reach a settled contract before school starts. Anything else to add on that, Martin?
No, there was a question that was forwarded to me from Vermont, the SB community group, and I just got the name wrong, I'm sure, about what happens if there's no contract in place at the start of school, and just want to make clear that this is, that's happened before, where there hasn't been a contract, and we proceed under the terms of the, of the previous contract until we have a new contract to replace it. So, school does move along.
And it's important to clarify for the public that the teachers still get paid, they still have health insurance, and they still receive their benefits. There, some people got the impression that that was not the case.
Bridget, comments on support staff?
Support staff, we're sort of waiting for folks to get back from vacation, we don't have another meeting scheduled with them at this stage.
Okay, and then also, we are, this is somewhat relevant, but on Act 85, we're anticipating, John, August 15th?
Yeah, we're supposed to get numbers by August 15th.
Okay.
We submitted our data for that a couple of days ago, but we don't know exactly how the state's going to compute that set of calculations, so it's, it's pretty much up in the air what it's going to impact us by until the 15th.
And just for, yeah, clarification for the public, on Act 85, there was legislation passed that, it looks like the approved budget was reduced by 13 million, that would be dispersed from the general ed fund to districts and supervisory unions, largely linked to anticipated savings on healthcare benefits. And the goal was to provide, based on data the districts were providing to, is it to the joint fiscal office or to?
I submit it to AOE.
AOE. So, it sounds like districts and SUs have submitted that to AOE, and the expectation is that we would receive kind of a targeted savings number, or it's really a, I'll call it a clawback reduction from the general ed fund, specific to South Burlington by that mid-August timeframe, is that accurate?
Right.
Yeah, and specifically, there's going to be an amount of money that, in our budget, we are supposed to get from the ed fund, and that's going to be reduced by some number in 2018, at the beginning of 2018, is my understanding.
But it's actually over a two-year period, so whatever the formula is, it would be over a two-year.
65% of it the first year and 35% the second year.
All right, any other board comments or questions? Any questions from the public? Yes, Wendell?
On contract negotiations, if schools should start without a contract, yes, teachers get paid, yes, they get benefits, but do they get their step increase prior to a settlement?
Yes, yes, they, under our contract, they do.
Some do and some don't.
Right.
I don't know which way I like them.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Do you, is healthcare in this deal, or is that a dumb deal?
No, healthcare is in collective bargaining, and the Act 85 made a recommendation that looked at, this clawback we're talking about is specific to a recommendation on cost-sharing within healthcare, so we're just trying to understand what the, what the proposed reduction is in terms of the general ed fund.
Are they going to use HSA or HR?
That's all part of collective bargaining, there will be four new plan options that will be available on January 1st, 2018, and two of them, actually, four of them include HRAs, and two of them include HSAs. And those all have to be negotiated in terms of cost-sharing.
The state law in this Act 85 anticipated employees might choose one or the other, but it did not mandate one or the other. HSAs versus HRAs.
Most of them wouldn't know what the HSA, they've had HRAs. An HRA, they've never funded. Some schools made a statement that they wanted the HRA because they could get the money back if they didn't use it. And that's the way the HRA wants it, and that's not its advantage to you or the teacher. The H, and I got a parrot with a free question there, which is very good, and, but it's been tough to convince people to get to them. And once they get into the HSA, then they fully fund them.
Yeah, both of those are tax-advantaged vehicles, the HRA is a health reimbursement account, which is employer-owned, and the HSA is a health savings account, which is employee-owned and portable with employees beyond employment, it's an owned asset. So, those are cost-sharing vehicles, tax-advantaged vehicles that are part of the new plans that will be introduced. Other questions or comments from the public? Yes?
You said there is a mediation, if I heard correctly, scheduled for August 21st?
In the event that we have a working session tomorrow evening?
Yep.
And in the event that a settled, a settlement is not reached, then, all the parties have agreed to meet with a mediator on August 21st.
Okay, understood.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. So, I got to see where we're at now.
Yeah, number nine.
Agenda item nine, I get out of order easily. Okay, we've got policy review, we've got action warned, we've got three policies to review, two second readings and a third reading. Why don't we start with the third reading on 2.10 curriculum development and review?
I move that we adopt 2.10 curriculum development and review.
Second.
Any discussion?
And just, it's a very easy, quick change from the board's ends policies to the district ends policies, one word has changed, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Yep.
So, move on to D8, travel reimbursement, this is a second reading.
This one still has the same mistake that we had last time?
Oh, shoot.
So, that last paragraph is just.
I'll lace them, I think.
So, we'll make that modification.
Capitalize mileage, I think it might be.
For a third reading?
Doesn't want to go away.
Any other comments on travel reimbursement, which is, for benefit of everyone, a required policy? We'll move on to E3, capitalization of assets, this is a second reading. Any additional comments or clarifications?
I don't like it.
I, no, I meant to look up for John, I'd ask him a question about 2 CFR 200, and I forgot to look up.
We have one more chance.
Yeah, so, I own that. I think it's the same reference that I was asking about.
So, that's your job for the next reading?
That's my job, yes.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions?
Great.
So, we should, we really only had, oh, we had action on 2.10, that's it.
Yeah, so that's off, and the other ones will have to move forward to the 16th.
Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item 10, executive limitations policy, monitoring and action is warned here. We'll start with 2.1, treatment of parents and guardians. How would you like to go through this, David?
Really up to you, you know, I made the changes and the updates, either the strikeouts or those that have changed were the highlights. I know that last time, you know, a lot of you, I mean, it's hard in some ways, some of the evidence doesn't change, you know, so, as much as I'd like to make them totally new or refreshed, it's, you know, I, the same data's going to be there, so I think this was, I don't know if this is still helpful, where you see what's not relevant is crossed out and what's relevant is highlighted. I wasn't sure whether that was consistent or not.
So, we had talked about at our last meeting, potentially going through the efficacy of the policy governance process that we're following now, but using two real-life examples, and I think we were going to consider using the master planning and visioning process and potentially the nickname change as two real-life examples, so, that is work we can put on a future agenda, but now, we're in, if we look at the little primer we did at our last meeting around policy governance and the intent of it, I guess I would make sure that particularly our new board members, but our more seasoned board members are really looking at these and looking at the relevance of the superintendent's interpretation, the evidence that's presented, and really assessing compliance in this modern report. And to the extent that there are any specific examples that you can recall from the last year that you'd want to highlight as where they fall within a policy, this is a good opportunity to kind of challenge our governance model here. So, David, this is the first time we're, so maybe we could go through the, what's been deleted and what's been added?
Mm-hmm.
So, under eliciting information detail policy one, page two, data collection specific to school lunch, obviously, it happened before, that's why that came out as evidence, so, and that was specific to No Child Left Behind. So, again, that's the rationale and reason for.
So again, that's the rationale and reason for that. Under Detail Policy 2, soliciting appropriate input to obtain necessary information, again, what's added here is just that our next ends survey will be in 2018. Again, I have other work around ends that I'll be updating you in other monitoring reports, but this is, again, some evidence to that.
Okay, on that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Martin.
No, yeah, I had a question about that one.
I mean, it may be the same one, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I, I, I see the evidence that, what, what seems to be missing to me is an explanation of how this various information that has been gathered is necessary to fulfill the ends policy, including the survey for that matter, you know, how was it used and how was it necessary? You know, there's just a, a list that doesn't tie it up to what the policy's supposed to be accomplishing.
So, again, I'm happy to go further on this, I said earlier, just a bit ago, that the ends data is used in many ways, or the survey, the particular policy from my perspective is I, it's requiring me to solicit input.
Right, and what I'm missing, what I'm missing from, from the evidence is how, in what manner these different items relate to the ends policy. The, the other thing is, it's a little bit difficult, it's actually very difficult, it's one of those proving the negatives, is what information are you not gathering that is necessary? But I think to get to that point, understanding how the information you are gathering is required information, relates to the district ends policy, might also help us understand if there's missing information. Because what you, I don't know if that made sense, you know, it's like.
So what additional information in the ends, the evidence, specifically what have we gleaned, or what, maybe there's a snippet of, what have we learned, what do we gather from?
Well, it's, it's really, yeah, I think what Martin is saying is, are, are we obtaining necessary information? So it's sort of a completeness of that, and then how is the information used to fulfill the ends policy? And my recollection is, and this is a good specific, not, not a good one, it may be a specific example, but I know we had quite a bit of dialogue on the end survey itself and the, the structure and content of it and the relevance to ends, so it was really, how was it designed in terms of collecting necessary information and how did that information get applied to fulfilling the ends? So that was specific to one, this one survey, so it may be appropriate at some point before it's administered to sort of review what information the survey has been deemed necessary and.
Does it tell us something?
Yeah, or what do we expect to tell us, and that would give us some indication. Is that getting a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's those two questions, which order one answers them, and I think one can answer, well, here's what we're getting, and here's what relates to the ends. Maybe that will help resolve the next question of, are we gathering the necessary information? Is there inform, what's missing? You know, what else should we be gathering, or the administration, what else should be gathering, be gathered that's necessary information?
I think what you're asking is, are we soliciting, under the detail policy, to appropriate input? Is this appropriate? Maybe it isn't, right?
Well, under two, it's necessary.
Right, so solicit appropriate input, necessary, to obtain necessary information to fulfill the district ends.
Yeah, and you, you're interpreting it slightly different, which is fine, and I look at the interpretation, you said, you know, the required information, again, same kind of question, is it necessary? Are you getting all the information you need? Is there anything that's missing? It's hard for, you know.
Yeah, I, I got it, let me, we can, I think we could add to the evidence piece.
Right.
Both details of what we have learned and/or what we might be in need of.
Right, I think going through that exercise might, you know, shed the light on that, so.
And to be clear, this is specific to parents and guardians, so.
Right.
Yeah, but I would, I, I have the same question, which is, we don't have really clear ends metrics yet, and that's probably not gonna be a one cut and dried, it's not gonna be a cut and dried test, or, you know, a, a very specific quantity, I think there are gonna be lots of different pieces that factor into the final, whatever we're using for metrics, and we do need to go through that exercise, I would agree, that, to think what we need from parents and guardians to make sure that we're meeting those, those ends.
Well, and I, I, you know, one of the things I think about here is, if, if I were in administration shoes, that, if I found myself ever asking the question of, gosh, I wish we just had this information, it would make our job so much easier. And, and a good example we just talked about is accurate kindergarten enrollment.
Right, right.
So, you know, that is necessary to fulfill our ends in terms of the, the parameters we have on, you know, delivering.
Another concrete example is, we heard a few different times from different parents, executive function is a problem for my child specifically, and that's one of those things that kind of falls, it's one of the details under some of our ends, or the bullet points that go under the headline ends. And it's hard to know that specific information, it, it might be a little bit on a proficiency-based, you know, report card, but a little bit of that is, are we soliciting that information from parents? Are they feeling like some of these more qualitative things that we're trying, you know, lifelong learning and these kinds of things, are those qualities that they're seeing develop in their students as they go forward? Because to.
That they could articulate in a survey like that.
That they could articulate, yeah, because the survey, as I recall, and I, I, it's not a piece of evidence in this.
Right.
It's a policy and not attachment this time, as I recall, it had a lot to do with what we thought the environment was like at school, you know, has your student had any disciplinary problems, or, you know, are they feeling supported in this way or that way? Do they have friendships? So those are, those are potentially interesting things, to me, they didn't speak directly to the ends. And this is kind of our last chance at reviewing this policy before the next end survey goes out, because if we're reviewing it again next summer, we will be seeing the end survey as it stands from 2018, so it would be good to, to sort of dive into that a little bit deeper.
Fair. Gotcha. Detail Policy 4, facilities about appropriate accessibility and privacy, this gets into some of the things that we've been doing kind of on a compliance basis on the stewardship plan. The evidence that's there is, from elevators to, you know, restrooms that I spoke about earlier that are happening at, at our schools, to things of that nature. Those are the ads, don't know if there's any questions specific to that.
From a, from a legal standpoint, is this, this will show my ignorance, is this now the legal way to define that we're, that the law is finding, I mean, you, you had regardless of disability, and now it's of all abilities and gender identity?
Right, it is definitely.
Is that the, the legal?
I believe we got some legal opinion on that, so that's why it's included, but I should just double-check to make sure that that does jive with what we're, we're doing with all of them, yeah.
And I, and I just, while we're on the interpretation, I, I think it's important to point out that the detail policy says fail to operate these facilities, and the interpretation, it is, will be made accessible, which is somewhat a little bit more of a future tense, that we're working towards that, which I think also is more in compliance with what is required under law. Now, if you're dragging your feet and not getting this done, then there may be a violation, but, but since we are making progress on these things, there shouldn't be. So I, I mean, I just, and pointing that out is, actually, that's a good way of interpreting that, since we're kind of getting into this a little bit more.
Thanks, Martin. So, move on, any other questions? There ain't none, I'll move on. It's rare that I try to move on, right? Detail Policy number five.
Move on.
This one is on parents and guardian, clear understanding of what is meant or not expected from the district. Evidence changes are on some work that we did around response time to parent email communications with administrative meetings and being clear about those response times needing to occur. Again, that's where we are, I think that's, continues to be a area that we need to keep work, you know, continue to walk.
So, so this is now kind of a training requirement?
Yeah. Detail Policy six, there's no changes. Detail Policy seven is security camera system, and this gets into the changes that we made last time when we did this policy, where we talked about the type of requests and we categorized them differently. Obviously, the dates requested are all different, of course, but the types of requests, we quantified them into kind of these buckets, this was, again, talked about at the last time. For those of you who weren't there, I don't know, I think we had probable illegal activity on all of them.
Right.
And this broke them out into different ones for Steve and, and Alex, I think, who didn't get a chance to see this one last time. So we've now put them into these appropriate buckets, from vandalism to theft, et cetera. So that's po, Detail Policy seven, any questions there?
Just one question is, would there not have been a June 6th request?
There probably could be, I guess, because some of those aren't resolved yet, I haven't, you know, there's a request, but it hasn't closed, so I haven't necessarily put it in the, I don't know what category to put it in, you know, it could be.
I'm just thinking, it's August, so.
Yeah, I got you, again, what's being referred to is kind of vandalism on the turf field, and certainly I could put that there, I just don't know quite what to, it's, it's an active investigation still, so that was my decision not to put it on there, but I think to Elizabeth's point, it's, it's August, so when will we know? It would certainly be.
Well, I didn't, I didn't necessarily think these were, were, there was a criteria being resolved, just that, I mean, I know, I saw a picture coming from one of our security cameras in the Free Press, so I'm assuming there was a request for that.
Yeah, that's, that's right. That said, though, a lot of the, the requests do have the, the title on them, and then they way, they do close, they, you know, we get the confirmed kind of situation, but, so noted. Detail Policy eight, again, this is the, looking at the responses and how people provide information, so what you see on the next page, seven of eight, is the suggestion box entries that come in through our website, you see the, the previous, obviously, and then kind of looking at some comparison, and the entries and what those were and, and the responses.
Is this, is this something for future monitoring, the Facebook page should be included?
Well, it's not the administration plan, it's the board.
Okay.
This is one board.
Yeah, I mean, this is, although you, the board, have been involved in some of the sec, suggestion box, suggestion box entries and responses, but this is kind of, the way I see it is under my kind of domain to, to monitor, manage, and.
Yeah.
Form, but I, I do think, probably won't be too long, I mean, there are some things going on with other social media that we probably need to be watchful of, to your point, and the Facebook page is, is an example that, right now, it kind of is a board Facebook page, but we may wanna talk about that more, that's a good point.
Do you have like the number of tweets that pass?
Yeah, right.
On a monthly basis?
Followers?
How am I gonna keep up with that?
How many followers he has?
Right, right. Okay, and that's, that brings us to the end. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Well, the last one doesn't have evidence, which, your overall policy, is missing the evidence section.
That, isn't that the sum of the details?
No, no, there's, there's usually evidence.
Thought we went through that before, and we had the evidence, and we took the evidence off.
No, I think we always, no, because.
We had a conversation about that.
Well, because in part, I mean, well, in part, the evidence, you did go over the individual policies, but in the policy itself.
So something.
It says, well, it says further, without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this enumeration, and then it lists those eight policies, which says to me that you have to look at that overall policy and provide interpretation, which you did.
Mm-hmm.
And, but then also evidence. And here's where I would also suggest you think about whether there should be evidence in there regarding how students, parents, and guardians were treated in regards to some of these things that have been going on, Rebel's name, master planning and visioning, and the budget, and how we're in compliance, that we did not, in those processes, treat or have conditions or procedures or decisions that were inequitable, untimely, vague, undignified, or unnecessarily intrusive. I think that should be addressed, I, those are.
You're looking for more a statement.
Well, I'm looking, well, I'm looking for.
Relative.
Every, every, I think every time this one's come up, or in the past, I've looked for evidence on, on that main policy before the enumerations, on whether there have been conditions and procedures or decisions that are in, you know, the list there. So, and, and you've interpreted it to include those, and I just believe this, this past year, we have a number of instances where I, I bet you that students, parents, and guardians have questions about how they may, you know, the, whether these conditions or decisions are inequitable, untimely, vague, et cetera. You do have a statement in, in the next one that we're looking at, 210, I noticed.
Mm-hmm.
Not 210, whatever, 27, thank you.
Asset protection.
But, but I think this is a, this is the kind of place where that kind of evidence, I think, is important. I mean, because frankly, I mean, I know, I have a good idea what the evidence is, and I believe that it shows that you're complying with this, with this.
Yeah.
But it's.
I just don't know how to, I really don't know how to quantify it, I guess is my, you know, so if you just take, you know, situations that were, you know, students during the crises, you know, how would I provide evidence that we provided, you know, crisis response methodologies that ensured, you know, to our, the best of our ability, safety? We exercised that, we called on authorities, I mean, but that's not really, that's kind of a statement, it doesn't, I don't have, how many, so parents responded back favorably that they appreciated, you know, getting the Blackboard Connect messaging. I mean, I guess I could provide the Blackboard Connect messaging that I provided, but it doesn't, if it didn't get to everybody, that's not really evidence.
Well, I think, I think you making a statement referring to those things could, could be sufficient to, yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, in the past, it's just been a statement, I should have brought the past ones, that, that there, that you made the determination that there wasn't any of these things that have happened. You know, there wasn't any conditions or decisions that were inequitable, et cetera, and we had no contrary evidence to that effect. This past year, there certainly people would argue that that's not the case, and I think it should be addressed.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I, I do think there's real examples with, I mean, I don't know what level of detail you'd wanna put in a statement, but even providing counseling following the school shutdown, I mean, there were, there were a number of examples that really preserved the interpretation of the overall policy that I think could, could serve as, even just examples of evidence, I don't think you have to go through the whole laundry list, but certainly execution of crisis plans, involvement of the city, you know, things, things like that.
Letters home, that's the parents and guardians.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
And if anything else was done for either with respect to the anxiety that the budget's going down may have caused for students, and, and maybe those don't apply, but at least look at the Rebel name issue, the.
Okay, got it. Any other comments on the monitoring report for treatment of students and parents
and guardians? Anything from the public? Yes?
Maybe, I don't understand, it's not about this specific one, it's a general comment about what you're doing right, right now, that I've been jotting notes, and I'm quite willing to wait until you get done with this part of the meeting to.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go into one other one on asset protection, but I think we'll entertain your comments now.
Okay, well, I scribbled down here, I'm gonna very crudely paraphrase the first of it, but how much meaningless effort is being expended by both administration and board to justify five other policy objectives are being met? And I'll skip some, and I ask the big-picture question, is policy governance an impossible attempt to digitize processes that are inherently analog and which would be better honestly handled as such? And about the time I finished that, I heard David say, I just don't know how to quantify it.
Well, I mean, evidence doesn't necessarily, well, may I?
Yes, please.
I mean, I mean, evidence isn't necessarily, I mean, we want it as precise as we can for the metrics on our ends, but the evidence can, doesn't have to be, as you call, digital and, and here's how many. in, and here's how many people came, or kids came and asked for counseling after our situation. It's the fact that we offered that. So it doesn't have to necessarily always be precise. I mean, and that is a difficulty in doing this.
Digitized information.
Right, right. Well, I agree, and sometimes it's a judgment of, of the board and whether we're satisfied that we have enough evidence to uphold whether the administration has violated the policy or not. And it's not always scientific. You know, I mean, it's, there's a judgment call in there. And it's, in my view at least, it's a judgment call that I make under a deferential standard to the superintendent, that I'm not going to question if I think something should be done a little bit differently, if what the administration did is reasonable, a reasonable interpretation. That's the way actually we look at the interpretations here. I might not necessarily always agree with the interpretation, it's not what I would say, but if it's reasonable, we defer. And that's kind of somewhat with the evidence that, I mean, it's a little, it does sound loosey-goosey, and sometimes it is, others it's not. I mean, there's, there's some in the financial stuff, which is, you know, we get exactly how much money we're paying in interest for having to do a tax anticipation loan, those kind of things, and that's part of our policies. I don't know if that's addressing what you're saying, but, I mean, I think it's workable.
Trying to do something analog, or trying to quote-unquote digitize it, when perhaps if the whole policy governance wanted why, and you just had a whole lot more open, honest discussions about issues, you might feel better off.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's certainly one way, but the concept behind it is that we're not going to get into the means of how the administration is fulfilling the ends. We have sideboards, which are what these monitoring reports are looking at, saying you can, achieving the ends, you cannot do this. It's really oddly stated, because, you know, the superintendent shall not do a whole list of things, which is weird, but those are the limitations that we, we have to look and see if, if the administration's going beyond those limitations. Otherwise, you know, we are trying to defer to administration in the means in accomplishing the ends that we've set. I don't know if that helps. I mean, it's a little, it's a different way of running things, certainly, than other school boards do.
Okay, I'll try to simplify it, so we can move on.
Right, right.
I am questioning whether policy governance is a good idea.
Well, that's what I, and that's what I understood you saying, and I was doing my not very well, and, or maybe I was, I was defending it.
That's a quite unexpected answer.
Yeah, and I think we're, I know, the, the beginning of our last meeting in public session, we had some discussion around evaluating the efficacy of policy governance, and even this board defines the way we use policy governance, or the governance model, as modified policy governance, because we do run into real-life examples often that don't fit into the box of limitations. And some of the, some of these, like where there are hard and fast data, are a lot easier to administer from an evidence standpoint. I think we're continuing to figure out and work with the superintendent around, does this work for our district, and does it allow for meaningful conversation, and also allow, as Martin mentioned, you know, the CEO of the district to do the job we hired him for, without the board kind of getting into the weeds, but also knowing, as representative of the community, that we have an interest in understanding some lower level of detail, too. So I, I think we're going through an evaluation process now that will challenge where it's working for us well, and maybe where we need to consider more modifications. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll move on to two point seven asset, well, we'll move this one forward with some modifications.
Yep, to the August sixteenth.
Okay, and we'll move on to two point seven asset protection.
So again, this is similar to earlier, same, same way we've added, updated those pieces of evidence that have changed, and taken out those areas where they have not, or may changes. Mostly it's red, it's highlighted. So I don't know how you'd like to do that? Would you like to go through them individually?
I think, again, the highlights or deletions is helpful.
Okay, so that's good. So John, maybe I'll ask you to walk us through, kind of by-
Fixed, excuse me, asset protection, of course, the first thing that I think of with asset protection is insurance. And there's a whole first section here, talks on Detail Policy One, our participation in the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust program, which is a insurance program custom-made for school districts. Most school districts in the state participate in this. It's a strong program, and it covers all the risks that we're likely to face with some very, very generous coverages. So I think that certainly is in compliance. The Detail Policy Two, the only thing we changed here was the dishonesty policy limit increased, I think, from four hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars per incident, and all employees that are, have access to cash are covered by that. Detail Policy Three talks about proper maintenance of your-
John, can we hold up a second and see if there's questions on Detail One or Two at this point?
So, on two, the very last paragraph, about computers used in the Chromebooks, I just want to confirm that that's still accurate. Is that-
You're on Policy Two, last sentence.
Yeah, the last paragraph of your evidence, the computers used in the one-to-one laptop program covered for four years.
I'm not seeing that, Martin.
I'll follow you on the different one, I think.
Oh, I'm in three.
Yeah, I think you're in three.
Anything on Detail One or Two?
I apologize, Tom.
All right.
Detail Policy Three talks to proper maintenance of our equipment, and we've listed here as evidence, as we did the previous time, all the different vendors and service contractors that maintain our equipment. We think we do a good job of keeping this stuff up to snuff. The, the computers, one-on-one, are still covered for four years. Under, they are still covered by a policy offered by Dell. I think there's a difference in how that operates now. I think we do the work or something, and they pay us for it or something. I'm not sure what that is.
There's a combination, depending on what type of service they need. I mean, obviously, if it's a whole, like, I'm going to say a whole board that needs to be replaced, that goes back to Dell, but incidental stuff, we do have technicians that can do that, and they send us the equipment. It turns the time, turns the device around quicker. To Martin's point, I think the Dell and Chromebooks, I think whether or not they were laptops and Chromebooks are both currently being deployed or used, that's correct. We still do have Chromebooks, and the Chromebooks cost much less than the, than the laptops, and we have found them to be appropriate and usable, and they, we also are less, they're less dependent than on the, the storage mainframe of our district, and they're more cloud-oriented, and so they've been a positive addition to the, to the technology.
Yeah, on, on Detail Three, it would seem to me, evidence that might be a little more relevant than the, the list of vendor by category, might be kind of just the list of, like, you know, elevators, what, what is the useful life, and then-
What's the frequency?
What it was when it was replaced, if it has been. So are we looking at assets that, for the most part, are going-
Within their useful.
Within or beyond the life expectancy, and do we have a few exceptions where they did not last that period of time?
So maybe another category.
I'm pretty sure this exists somewhere, but-
Well, on our stewardship plan, that's one of the, the main drivers of our stewardship plan, is useful life, and then ongoing, and ongoing maintenance that we have, you know, on all of them.
And when you're, while you're on the stewardship plan, if there could even be, doesn't have to be attached, but it seems like the stewardship plan is the primary evidence that you're compliant with this particular policy. Just a reference to it would be helpful.
Well, we could certainly add that. We've started on next year's. Detail Policy Four, I think this is an insurance question, again, at least partially. And last year, we used the loss ratio trend that Visbit gives us in each one of these policies, that we are trying to watch claims. We're positive in both general liability and property liability, and school board legal is a new one. It had not been positive previously, but it is now. Workers' compensation continues to be an issue, not only for us, but for many school districts in the state. And we don't have an awful lot of auto or auto physical damage liability issues, but that's here as cautionary.
I can't quite understand Exhibit Four. I was trying to understand more, just how different we are in terms of workers' compensation versus other districts, or, you know, why that. So it says, the next page, that there's, there's more information about why we're rated negative in that category, but I couldn't really understand the attachment.
Yeah, and that's what happens when you try to print a colored document on a black and white thing.
So does that just mean that we have a lot more workers' compensation claims than the average school district, or the severity of them is higher, or?
Yes. I believe this is based on dollar value of claims, like the loss ratio, and we are in the higher group in that particular coverage. You can at least see on page Exhibit Three, page thirty-three, the bottom, the pages are numbered, page thirty-three. South Arlington is probably the eighth or tenth from the bottom, and I think that's largely because of our workers' comp experience. And you can't read it. We could certainly get, get you a better copy of this.
If you could change it to say Exhibit Three and Four, because it's referring to the wrong exhibit.
Yeah.
I guess we got it misnumbered.
Yeah, same with the Exhibit Five, and under the safety inspections, I think that one needs to be renumbered.
Okay. Going on, we do do safety inspections. We have, Visbit comes in on request and on their own say-so to come in and do inspections. And we have an example of one of those here on office ergonomics. Protection from errors and omissions.
So, before you go on-
Sure.
In the safety inspections, it says during the past year. Is that, is that accurate? That it was this past year that the playground and-
I believe it was.
Yeah, we did, we did.
I think I did check that.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, because it wasn't changed. I mean, it didn't have a highlight.
We, yeah, so we could say we do it annually.
It is done, okay.
Yeah.
I think the other thing that'd be helpful is in the text of the evidence, rather than just say, refer to Exhibit Four, maybe say, list the title and exhibit number, and just say, if it's a sample exhibit, like if there are others that are representative of that. So it might be sample exhibit, Visbit Ergonomics Study, something like that.
Okay. Moving on to Detail Policy Five, speaks to-
I'm sorry, just two more questions.
Sure.
On Four. Under protection from errors and omissions, I'm curious, is the Rebels' case, are legal fees covered by Visbit?
Say that again, are Rebels?
The Rebels' petition case that we're defending.
The Superior Court case.
Superior Court.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's one of them that's covered in there, okay. And under human resources, talks about the major work being accomplished. It was the update of language in both administrators' union contact, contract, and SBEA's professional support union contract. That was at least a couple of years ago, so it's, I mean, is there, are there, is there new evidence to be added to that? And maybe not, but I would-
Well, it's just been ongoing. I mean, this has been one of the things that was recognized as a, you know, as a need, and it continues to be kind of an ongoing component of evidence around trend, providing that support.
Right, but those contracts were, I mean, they're not really being changed again right now, it was a couple of years ago. I just say, that's, I guess that information is a little stale, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, so we, I mean-
We could probably put some fresher stuff in there.
We, I mean, we are updating on an ongoing basis, you know, but I think to your point, what did we update last then, right? A little bit more on the specific, what we, what we have been doing. It's fine.
So Detail Policy Five speaks to our adherence to the purchasing policies and conflict of interest arrangements. And there's every, almost every board meeting, there's purchasing activity that comes to the board to be analyzed and okayed. John Stewart had developed a purchasing policy and a conflict of interest policy. One of the problems here last time was that he hadn't been able to get that disseminated well to employees, but this past year, we have managed to send that to all employees involved in that work, and we have included a training on it in the Safe Schools platform. So that, I think that one is now in compliance. At least people know, know or should know those two policies.
I'm just a little confused on that one, because it says compliance in this Detail Policy, but then at the end-
Yes.
It calls out that it's not in compliance.
I think I have a typo there.
Okay.
I updated this one, but I didn't update the one at the end that said that we've got this now in compliance, so we have to change that. Detail Policy Six, we, we continue to have a good, robust disaster recovery protocol for our systems, and it's, it's housed at a separate district location away from the IT building. We, we do struggle with paper documents. We do store many paper documents, both onsite and offsite. It'd be nice to get to a scanned paper storage system, but that's a fairly big project that we haven't started yet.
I'm not sure we will yet.
It's, it's a big job.
It's needed, but.
Intellectual property, we have protocols in place for that. Confidentiality, security of information. So I report policy compliance there. Received, processed, or dispersed funds under controls that are insufficient to meet board-appointed auditor standards. Just update for the FY sixteen audit report was completed with no findings or material weaknesses in the audit letter. The management letter did have comments about the food service deficit fund balance, which I think we addressed last year, and again this year, we've reduced that. Write off of stale-dated checks, accounts payable process, cash disbursements from student activity accounts. I think we've made progress in all those. One thing that had not been done yet for this year that needs to be done is this financial management questionnaire that needs to be done every year, and that is included here on page fifty and fifty-one. This is a, a kind of self-audit tool that the State Auditor's Office developed a few years ago, and asks SU offices to, school district offices to present to their boards at least once a year and have a conversation about it. It relates to whether or not we have controls in place and who is responsible for what in a financial sense. So I'm hoping that after this meeting, we can have a board member sign off on this, and we'll send that into the State Auditor's Office, and we'll be in compliance from their point of view. But that's a piece of evidence that we adhere to GAAP and GASB and different controls. Number Eight. I did, I did a little struggle with that. How would you prove that you didn't compromise- How would you prove that you didn't compromise the auditors? I'm going to say that we didn't do it. Detail Policy Nine speaks to security of our deposits. And I did ask our depository bank, Community Bank NA, to tell me about their collateralization routine, which I found to be standard in the industry. The other exposure there, if you will, is your own district pension plan, which is not guaranteed. It is managed according to the Securities Investment Investor Protection Corporation insurance for, you know, for whatever safety that could provide. But generally speaking, the safety there arises largely from diversification of the investments and having it professionally managed rather than having it, say, managed in-house. So I think we've met that one. Detail Policy Ten, my first time doing it, I found it a little funny that we'd have to have the board approve a change in the board's name or public image. But in fact, I think we had two incidents of that this year. Both in the Rebel name conversation where that was extremely public. And Shirley, Sheila Burley Gymnasium naming, which the board approved back in the fall, I believe, about nine months ago.
So we talk a little bit about Detail Policy Ten. And maybe this is a broader question. This is a context of the, of three things that have happened since we last saw this. One was finishing up master planning and visioning, the Rebels name and the budget. Now, my question is, it says, was any, well, first of all, I would say that we, that the district hasn't done anything to endanger the organization's public and image credibility or ability to accomplish its ends. There may be people in the committee who disagree with that conclusion. But, but my question though is that, there was a recommendation from the administration regarding those items. But that's action that the board took. So are we kind of owning those changes? And if not, then I think there needs to be some discussion in the evidence of Detail Policy Number Ten of how the superintendent, how the administration responded to these different challenges that I mentioned and how they, the administration responded so that it did not endanger these items in Policy Ten. I don't know what the answer to that. I mean, it was both, I mean, it was more of a board decision on those items. So does that mean that what the administration did with respect to those things wasn't going to be endangering the organization's public image credibility, et cetera?
Well, but two, I mean, all of those items included an administrative recommendation and then elements were the board, you know, took sort of another action on. And master planning and visioning being an example where there was an administrative recommendation and then the board took a, really shepherded a process that led to the resolutions. And even on budget, that was ultimately board recommendations and the board going through a process of understanding and providing some prioritization and working with administration to kind of present that to the community. So I don't know, I don't, I don't think those are as easily divorced as you're implying.
In that, in that case, I do think, just like I mentioned for my brain shouldn't be shut down this early. That there should be a statement here, because again, those are big, those are big events of this past year. And certainly one could ask whether there was any endangering of these things. Again, I think they were well handled, but I think that it still needs to be addressed more directly by the administration in this particular Detail Policy.
Maybe in a category of its own or something, yeah.
Well, I mean, it does, your interpretation, I've been looking at your interpretation and whether it narrows the actual policy too much, but not necessarily, because I think those items, what we were talking about, does go to the image of a high-quality educational program, which is in your interpretation. Resource management, certainly the master planning and visioning, the staff conduct. Maybe that one's not as relevant in this particular instance, but it may have to be, in this particular instance, a separate statement. But I think it should be addressed.
Well, if you look at, you know, I think one of the things you're highlighting, Martin, is if you look at a monitoring report in the confines of limitations, you would never address exceptions. And I, I think one of the modifications we may need to think about with our monitoring reports is this also serves as a record to capture events that were acted on in a given calendar, your fiscal year. So it does serve as a record. And one of the, one of the things, I don't know if we really have had a discussion about is, you know, this, the evidence of the monitoring report should also outlive us on the board and, you know, people in leadership positions to sort of serve as.
Kind of an ongoing.
Where, where the policy touched on events like that, whether they were one-time or an ongoing event. So I'm agreeing with you, but, but it has to be captured in a little bit more of a qualitative way.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, this, this Detail Policy Number Ten is very analog and undigitized and qualitative. I mean, it is, but, but I think that this particular policy is one of the more important ones we have, but it's also one of the more amorphous ones we have. I let for, you know, if, one could argue if we had continued with the Rebels name, there could have, if you never brought that to us, one could argue, I want to understand why that wasn't endangering the organization's public image. I mean, it so happens that I think we took the right decision and you made the right recommendation.
Well, this one's, this one's kind of a combination, because there's some clearly hard data vis-à-vis insurance policies and so forth.
Right, right, the overall one, right.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's, I mean, I think that it's degrading the brand of South Burlington schools. And that's often more of a qualitative kind of analysis.
So what you would, so to be clear on the evidence or addition of evidence under ten, you're thinking adding some sort of a statement that walks us through a little bit of the more recent or this past year events? Is what I'm hearing, is that right?
Right, that were handled in a manner that did not endanger these items. I think that's very good evidence that there's compliance.
Gotcha.
It's not in here.
Let's see here. Yeah, so Detail Policy Eleven, I'd mentioned the Rebel name change here and the gymnasium change as something that was done correctly. And as I mentioned before, the very last two sections here are an error. We would like to claim that we're in compliance rather than not in compliance, but I failed to correct that. And there's a ton of exhibits here that, basically, I repeated, you know, the past report. But there's a lot there.
One, one comment on Detail Policy Eleven. I think, do we say? I don't think the overall policy specifically calls out like the board or the public. So.
Oh, you're like, I, I'm interpreting it that way.
Let me see, what, your interpretation is?
Change the organization's identity and the community in my interpretation.
So you've got board action.
Is required, yeah.
But. I mean, I think this is, this is sort of excluding, in my mind, that students were involved and, you know, things like that. So I'm not sure.
My headset.
I would, I would just maybe speak to the process and the timing and the opportunity for public engagement and student involvement and all of that.
So this particular policy, though, isn't essentially that the fact that, didn't we approve both the naming of the gymnasium? The board approved that and the board voted on the Rebels name? And that's, the compliance is that no names were changed by the administration.
Right.
I mean, it was, this just means that the administration can't do that. And they didn't, we did. So, I mean, I think the evidence is even more simplified that these two name changes occurred and they were approved by the board.
But part of that is the evidence that the process by which we provided the recommendation to the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, yeah, that's my dad.
The involvement of students.
And my general feeling, John, on the exhibits is it's just too much stuff for a monitoring report.
When I saw what was provided previously, it was like forty-one pages and I kind of blanched. And then when I got done, I noticed I'd done sixty-one and I was like, oh, man, that seems like an awful lot.
Well, maybe.
Point taken.
Could it point to like the, like the whole auditing report and then just call that names or pages number?
It might, might be like a table of contents and then if there are some specific one-page examples of, where an exhibit can be as an example of.
Cut that down.
So also on the overall policy, there needs to be some evidence that. Yeah. Because you do have an interpretation of the policy and then you don't tell us whether or not jeopardy or to the financial integrity or public image in fact occurred.
Yeah. I predicted that.
Based on the last one. Any other comments, anything from the public? All right, we'll bring that one back. All right, we'll move on to item twelve, review topics for other paper articles. I think we have missed our opportunity for a, an ad for tomorrow.
Considering the papers are being printed as we speak, yeah.
Do we have that scheduled handy?
No, I don't think we have it at your side, but I think Ms. Gilroy has some copies.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Dylan.
I did send a note to Alex about being prepared to draft an article which would be submitted August twenty-fourth to run in the nine-seven issue. And this is in regard to the student representative and responsibility. So the expectation would be it would sort of set the stage as kids were coming back to school for the requirements and elements of participation of a junior representative on the board that would serve for two years.
My question about that is eight-twenty-four, it's going to be right after our mediation session with the teachers.
I, that's an excellent question. And the, yeah, I don't.
Assuming that we don't have a contract at the end of the day tomorrow.
Yes, well, in addition, it will be after we will have received the Act eighty-five targets as well. So I think prudently, what I would probably recommend is we go ahead and have Alex draft this article. And we may have to hold it, but run the student selection process, which the intent was to run that by the end of September. So we had a student representative, a second student representative on the board in October as we were starting to ramp up budget activities. And really to get the benefit of a full year or close to a full year, the first year. So if, if that's okay, we'll keep flexible on that one. But we already have two, two thoughts there that Act eighty-five might be one and then.
The status of where we are.
Negotiations, yeah. Would be another, anything else?
Well, my question on Alex, I'm sorry. My question on Alex's article, I do think the timing of hers is important, because we do want to get that process started. My question is whether we need to take up the board column with it, though, or that's a more appropriate thing for whatever we're calling the student newspaper now, I know it used to be. Or some other way of communicating directly with the students. Because it does feel like we need to get that information out there, but whether that needs to be in the other paper, which students may or may not read.
Well, and we may ultimately decide that. I, I think it was an effort to communicate to the community the role of a student representative.
Yes, and I, and I think that that, yeah, and I think that that could be a good article, that that could come potentially anytime. I mean, maybe after the contract is settled with the teachers or, you know, some of these other things are off of our plate. It could help clarify for the community what that's about.
Well, I'll, I'll maybe make it clear to Alex that we may have to be flexible on the use of that article then. But given that we, it seems good to have a couple in our pocket as needed in the future. It might be good to go ahead and have that.
So, so I would just comment as far as, that column as far as negotiations, I would say that if, I'll be optimistic. When we have an agreement on the twenty-first, that would be a good column. But if we're still at impasse, I don't know, we'd have to check with Julie. I don't, Julie, I think generally the other paper doesn't generally want that column to be an advocacy piece or, you know, something that's controversial. And if we're at impasse, we may have to buy space to make our case.
Well, the, yeah, an article would be like the terms of settlement, for instance. And an ad would be if, if there's a need for some kind of positional.
Right, and we're putting out, right, just FY.
Whereas Act eighty-five would be informational at that point. Anything else? I mean, those, those seem to be two obvious ones that are going to hit that same timeframe. And then we were looking at the end of September submission for an early October publication, really on budget and community engagement. Well, we have.
Preliminary numbers?
Secured a citizens advisory group.
We, we haven't in the past at that early stage, but we can, I mean, that can be.
I would recommend that we do. I mean, just my own personal opinion, having been on that advisory group, it's very hard. Sort of at Thanksgiving time to sort of get up to speed that quickly and really have good recommendations before you feel like you're being asked to sort of send a budget to the board for approval in January. So I would recommend that we get something in, in that timeframe and try to get people on board in October, but.
I think to the point of this is that people, you know, if we can get out information, particularly those that became more engaged in the budget, if they're interested in serving on that, then, you know, having a good cross-section of our community would be, would be great. We typically kind of put out those feelers, this being one of them. If they're interested in being on the budget advisory, they should let us know, myself, John Ovin. It would be great, but, so, yeah, I get that.
All right, so as far as the timeframe then of something to be published the end of, or submitted the end of November for early December, any of the topics below that we'd want to cover? I think we, did we cover no homework? Oh, Cory did.
Cory covered. No homework, no homework.
Yes, thank you, we can check that off our list. And maybe that's where the student representative one would shift to then.
Could be. The other question is, I don't know how to frame this, but we just talked about more community engagement and people being, wanting to be more active. Do we need a column about, you know, sort of the responsibilities of the board and that kind of thing? Because that December timeframe is when frankly, not that I want people to run against us, but if people are going to run against you and I for our seats, they need to sort of understand potentially what they're getting themselves into. they need to sort of understand potentially what they're getting themselves into and sort of, yeah.
A school board member.
Yes, and then they would need to start getting petitions together if they're going to do that. So I don't know if we want to use the board column for that specifically or have that be a piece of information in one of our public meetings, but I think people need to understand what it's all about.
And that could technically run either those last two because the, but the submission date for petitions would be about two weeks after that last one.
Yeah.
It's a little bit tight.
Yeah, maybe the November one.
All right, we'll put that in as a placeholder. All right.
So all this smirking going on around.
I know.
It's like there's a camera and so, you know, you sit and sort of bite your tongue. So what you want to say and also include the number of meetings and the total hours. But then the idea is to encourage participating.
To the subcommittees.
All the fun.
And bargaining and, you know.
Everybody will be watching it by now, so.
No, that's the thing.
That's at the smart.
We like transparency, though.
All right, we'll move on to setting the agenda for the August 16th meeting.
So we're going to add superintendent's report, even though I won't be here, but it would be an update on student enrollment.
Who's filling your seat?
And FD, Joanne Godak. And, and FDE, did I say that already? The other things, I think those are all fine to come back. We have third readings. I don't know if we want item eight, if I'm not here, Bridgette Martin. We probably could.
Well, and I'm also not sure if we're going to be able to meet before you're gone again. So I'm not sure there's going to be a lot of update at that stage.
It's really up to you guys whether you wanted to.
Well, we could put the resolution on.
Yeah, that's right. So we take maybe master planning off this time, put the resolution on.
And warn that for action.
Speaking of warning, is the Monday meeting warned? The line of, you know, the Monday morning.
Monday, the 20th.
Meeting, yeah, this coming Monday for negotiation preparation.
No, I don't, we haven't.
Yeah, yeah.
Monday.
I'm glad that the word warned was mentioned so I could pass it on.
All right, anything else for that? Moving on to any future agenda items.
So can we just pause on that warning, though? So are there three of you planning to be at the Monday? Okay, because that's, we haven't done that.
No, we've done it when we've, yeah.
I know, but we haven't, we haven't always when there's only two, but.
Right, right, but there's three of us because I'm going to be there on Monday.
All right, agenda item 14, future agenda items. Anything on or off the list?
I haven't really looked at this very well, so I'm not going to be able to give you a lot. We had to leave a bad disguise last time.
So SB Schools Foundation update.
It's on there, yep. Another thing that just kind of sparks my memory of things. There was this, there's a spirit fund which has been raising money to pay for incidentals for co-curriculars and athletics and such, stuff that we didn't cover in the budget that were not necessary to field teams. And there's about $5,000 in that spirit fund.
And I think the foundation, I mean, I've, as the last board member who was the board representative on the spirit, I mean, on the foundation, I initiated, I sent an email to David, to Patrick Burke and to Joanne.
About.
Thank you, my brain. To see about setting up a meeting of the foundation to talk about how to use those funds. And I'm just wondering if we should.
Pull it off and talk about.
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm wondering if we should pull it off and talk about it. But it'd be the first meeting in September, though, because I'm not going to be here this next week.
You can do that. So add it to the first meeting in September, an update on the spirit fund, maybe.
Well, yeah, on the foundation and its purpose. And hopefully by then, the, what remains of the members of that, of the board for that foundation will have gotten together.
All right, seeing no other suggestions, we'll move on to agenda item 15. And we have four meeting minutes to review. July 18th, that was a working subcommittee meeting.
Looks fine to me.
All right. We've got July 19th, a regular meeting.
I've got a couple relatively minor changes on that one. On page five, under update on negotiations. The first paragraph there, the last sentence needs to be made into a sentence. Link to health care, comma, is affecting negotiations. That's just a minor change. But the more substantive ones, and I can give this to you, Delaine, and my change is honest. The last sentence of the second paragraph, "A meeting is scheduled August 3rd for post fact finding negotiations, not report, and the parties may schedule another before the start of school." Not any real substantive, but I thought probably should make that clear.
All right, July 24th, that was a working session. Seeing none, and July 26th. A special meeting. All right, seeing none. By consensus, those are approved. Moving on to agenda item 16, adoption lease resolution, and this is warned for action.
Correct.
Unfortunately, we did not get the lease documentation in time for this meeting. So we just want to pass on that one. We'll do it probably at the 20th.
So is it all of those, John? We didn't get them? I thought we had, not for all of them, right, they're all together.
They're all together. And we just, we were trying to get it, we didn't get it.
All right, so.
So that has to go on the 16th?
Is that going to be adequate for, when they, when do we expect that we'll get it?
We were promised it like the last five days. It'll probably get here tomorrow or the next day.
We need to put it on there for the 16th.
If it can go on the 16th, we can do it on the 16th if you're willing. It's a, it'll be reviewed by our attorney. And that we'll prove the lease purchase.
Well, if we could see it in advance, so maybe we could ask you any questions we have before you go on vacation, and that would be helpful.
If you could get it on the 16th, that would be great.
Yeah, it will, I mean, putting it on that agenda without you being here, John, we would need to make sure we have it in advance and an opportunity to ask questions.
With any luck, we'll get it in the next couple of days. And we'll send it right out to you, but Bob Fletcher will take some time to look at it, too.
Is this type of thing that you could tack on to one of the other meetings and one of us could just dial in and get a quorum and move it? Or is time of the essence or is this?
21st, you know.
Well, we meet the 16th, but I think Monday.
We meet on Monday.
Monday, that's what I'm saying. Can I dial in from Montpelier?
Well, there are three of us there. I mean.
Oh, you have a quorum already?
It would be a quorum, that's why we're warning the meeting, so.
We could do that. I think it's probably better to keep it on the 16th for transparency purposes for the public. It's been warned this way, I think.
That's fine.
Okay. Like just keeping it that way. It's not that, I don't know.
It's, we do it every year.
I'm worried about also when we're going to get it. And I hate to back it in, but.
Well, John, you haven't said, but is there some problem that would happen if we didn't have these signed off on the 16th?
It's really not a big issue. It, you know, we have actually purchased, I think, one of these, the computers. And it would be nice to pay that vendor, but we could pay that vendor and have the lease reimburse us. We've done that before. So this is, this, you know, if we had a cash flow problem, it would be, we'll really go. So we could, we could do it at the 16th or the 11th.
Keep it on the 16th and we'll hope for that.
So just a point of order on that. When we ask for amendments to the agenda, should that have been taken off?
Yep.
So we should look forward on those if we don't have the information. All right, so agenda item 17, consent agenda for a bid for the Chamberlain parking lot repair.
That was at your table tonight. It was included in the budget originally at a $40,000 price tag and was reduced by the end to $25,000. We asked three paving contractors to give us prices. And it was hard for them to even think about doing the project for the money we had. But ECI did give us a price of $28,450 to do like some of the most pressing work. And they've done excellent work for us here before. So I'd appreciate it if you could approve that bid for $28,450.
And the reason for the differentials is just that the other bidders weren't bidding apples to apples?
No, we, you've got a project there that's probably $150,000 worth of work. And there's no way we could budget that, but we really wanted to do something. It's not in good shape. And the other two were like, look, we'd love to help you out with a $25,000 project, but we don't want to put our name on it, essentially. And we begged ECI to give us a proposal to do the remedial work that it really demands. So you'll see this one again. We will, in all honesty, probably put it on next year's budget for some more work.
So, I mean, this work is going to involve patching?
They're going to, we, it involved pulling up some of the pavement that's there, regrading, moving some of the current material around. There's two or three catch basins that are like in a state of disrepair that have to be reconstructed. So there's actually some catch basin work. It will be a big improvement over what's there now, but it needs more work. And it goes to the question of how much money do you want to put in there? And, but if we're going to operate that building, we have to keep it as safe as we can.
ECI has done some work, if you notice, those of you who've been in and out of this parking lot. They stripped, they stripped, they did some stripping, you know. They grind up the gravel and then they, you know, regraded it. And so you've seen, if you see the kind of the black stripes in certain places where there's been significant problems. So they've done a good job that way. They would need to be doing something similar. It's not just patching the potholes because the pothole will come reemerge unless you fix the issue. So that's a big part of the need there.
It was just a simple question of when you see that big of a disparity in the bids, it's not for the same work, it's for different works.
I wanted to make sure that that was noted here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, and that's a fundamental question I have because we often have the issue of we don't get very many bidders. And that's a frustration sometimes. But where the specifica, I am concerned if the specifications for the project were the same.
Well, they all saw the same specs.
So why would the bids be different for our specs?
Either they don't want the job.
They didn't, they didn't want to do that job.
Would be the guess. I don't want to play in their court, but.
They wanted to do the job right, the other two, and we just don't have the money for that. I mean, I hate to say that, but.
You know, civil engineering, they put the specifications together. They're, you know, a professional firm that puts those out. So it's not like you're reading different, differently. Like what we wanted done and what we had money for.
Two different things.
Any other questions on this? So this is not, this is not a, an action item?
It was on the consent agenda.
Yep.
Maybe I shouldn't have.
Chamberlain parking lot. It's a, it's a.
Nor is it above the amount that requires board approval, so.
No, but it's good to have seen it because it sort of points out that we're doing this in a couple of places where we're patching through things and kind of being careful.
Okay, any questions on agenda item 18, AP order number three? All right, seeing none. Go ahead, John. Nope, sorry.
No, not about that, before we get to this adjournment part. I forgot about one announcement. Is it like not kosher for me to go back and?
Do an announcement?
Yeah, it's just that I'm going to be, I'm on the committee for resolutions for the Vermont School Board Association. It's meeting this Friday. And I haven't had a chance to see what we're going to be looking at, but different boards submit possible resolutions. And there's a committee of something like 10 people that go over them and decide which ones to recommend to the full body in the October annual meeting. So I had meant to mention that and I forgot.
All right, should I go into executive session from here or?
I think that's what we decided we have to do, right?
Right, I think you.
I have to remember.
Return this meeting and go into executive session.
So I will take a motion to adjourn?
No, to go into executive session. I will move that we go into executive session for all those reasons why we go into adjourn.
We're going to, we'll adjourn from executive session.
I'm adjourning first.
I thought that we were not supposed to do that. You remember, we had this discussion with Wendell.
I have to tell you this again?
Yeah, what, yeah. Yeah, right. I think I had suggested the law policy, we need to just.
Go into executive session.
Okay, so I will take a motion to go into executive session to consider confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to this school board concerning a real estate matter. Where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we'll move to executive session.
You can bring your second to sign there.